Hey, Amy.
Hi.
It's working.
Yay, you have a mic.
Hey, well, it goes mute every, like randomly, it'll still mute.
Oh, man. Hopefully I don't have to run over and grab you.
No, I know if if someone just waves at me, I'll know to unmute it. I just don't know why it randomly mutes. I don't know, whatever.
Amy, this is Rex. How did I get the camera to show? Or don't worry about it?
If you have a camera in the bottom left, there's a little carrot next to the little camera that says, and then you can select.
There it is. Yeah, okay, I got it. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Hi, Rex, we finally get to see your face.
How are you doing, Nora? Good to see you.
Better now that I can see you, hi.
Did you get a new computer, Rex?
Well, I found one here that is a laptop that has everything I need, so I fired that up and got that to work.
Hey, Amy, I'm getting us an orange triangle that says cannot start video, failed to start the video camera, please select another camera.
Okay.
Should I just get out and get back in? Oh.
I I just asked you to start it, but if it won't let you, then I would say jump out, maybe even restart your computer and then jump back in.
Okay.
Teacher contracts. See this?
Ready.
Legit. It's legit. It's heavy.
We're definitely putting our copiers to good use.
Hey, oh, wait, she left, never mind. Nick, who is that?
Thanks, Amy.
There we go, Lisa, good.
Is it just us in the meeting right now?
No, it's not. We already have some attendees in here. Hi, Mike.
Hey, how are you? Sorry, that light's kind of behind me, it's weird.
It looks like you're in the bathroom, Mike.
You know, this is like a closet. My wife, like, makes me go in this little closet. It's like a Harry Potter closet.
Under the stairs?
It is under the stairs.
At least you have a light.
Oh, I could turn it off.
It's kind of scarier.
But yeah, it's a Harry Potter closet, I meant. But my cable modem is right next to it, so I have a good connection here.
There we go.
Mike, was that what you needed, what I sent you today?
Yeah, it was perfect, thank you. Yeah, I should get it all set up by tomorrow. Then I'll set up some sort of Zoom or something with everybody to teach them how to do it.
That'll probably be the challenge, finding a time, but.
Yeah.
Why don't you work with me? We'll try to figure out.
Yeah, I could send La Corretta margaritas at a specific time, and I bet you everybody will make it work.
Amy, do we have a flag picture?
Hi, Sean, is your audio working?
I think so.
Sounds good.
Cool.
And is yours working?
Yes.
Okay. Haven't, I definitely don't have all the board members in yet. Hide the closet, Mike.
Yes.
What kind of beverage was that?
Well, I'll be honest, it was a Coke Cherry Vanilla with nothing else.
Heck.
I know.
Do we have video and audio for any of our other?
Um, I haven't seen video from Bob yet.
Can you hear me?
I can hear Bob, I can't.
Do I have to start video? Is that what it is?
There we go.
Yep. We got you. Okay, I think everybody else, all the other board members, their video and audio are working. Sarah, did we check your audio yet?
Can you hear me right?
There we go, I heard Sarah and Perrin. There's Karina. And is Jan planning on being here?
I hadn't heard that.
Oh, there she is, XR, okay, there she is. Okay. So Karina, could you do a video sound check? Or Jan McGinnis, can you, oh, there you go, Karina. I can't hear you, Karina.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go, I can hear you now. It's a bad Verizon commercial. How about you, Jan?
Right here.
Yep, we can hear you. Yep.
All right, I'm gonna mute it.
Okay, Ms. President, I think we've got everybody in and video and audio. So now I will share my screen. Make sure no, not that one. Okay. We're good to go when you are, B.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order then. Welcome to everyone who is with us. It's good to see all of you well. And welcome to those who are watching us on Zoom or live on YouTube. And we're recording the meeting so that it can be played again at a later time. So welcome to those individuals who will be watching then. Um. During public comment, you will need to log into the meeting to speak. Did you receive any requests, Paulette?
I did not.
Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." And stand as you're able, and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
Be the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
There it is. And for those of you who have already. I just went away, but now I'm back. Okay. Do you have anything?
Yeah, we have one change to the agenda in the consent agenda. We have an addition for a open enrollment request for Sierra and Sophia Gary. Were you able to hear?
Is anybody else having understanding, or is it just me?
I was able to hear you.
I am not able to hear you, B.
I think it's just.
I think it's just B. B, maybe you can hop back out and then hop back in and see if that'll help.
Say, Amy, did you also try and share your screen? Because if you did, I'm not seeing anything.
Is anybody else seeing my screen?
I, over to Sean.
I can see your screen, Amy.
Okay, thank you. It might be the view that you're feeling, but I, it looks right on the YouTube channel.
The internet connection is unstable.
I can see mine. I did have to drag it to make it big enough to read and make all of you smaller. There's a little place you can grab it and pull, and that's what I did.
B, I'm I'm having a hard time hearing you. I wonder if if other people are, if you need to call in tonight? Just recommendation.
Um, yeah, it, I'm sure it would be more difficult for you to call in, but it might make things so smoother unless you want to call in and then restart your computer.
I can call in, but let's have take over the meeting.
Okay. I think Dr. Shudey had be asked if there were any changes to the agenda. Is that where we were? Yes, and there was one, one change. We added to the consent agenda, one open enrollment request for Sierra and Sophia Gary. Okay, then is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I moved.
Second.
I had a motion by Untied and a second by, was that you, Jam?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, Adam, we have, we have some recognitions tonight?
We do indeed. So we have with us three students, Jason Strand, Avery Bolar, and Claudia Hernandez, who I hope I said every student's name correctly. They are all state qualifiers for National History Day. And they had all of their projects and pressed judges. This has all been virtual, of course, all of the judging and sharing of the projects as we are all getting used to. And so I see from our attendees list, I saw for sure a few of the students and Susan Fritzell from Marshalltown High School. She, I'm gonna pass it to her. She is helping oversee these students' National History Day projects. And so she is gonna share a little bit about National History Day, and then we'll pass it off to Claudia, Jason, and Avery to talk a little bit about their projects. So with that, Amy, if I see that Susan is indeed on as an attendee, if you could switch her to being able to speak, and then we'll, we'll hear from her.
She is on and able to speak. I will unmute her. So Susan, can you talk?
Yeah, do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks. This is Susan. I'm the high school extended learning program teacher. And before we talk about these three special students, I just wanted to point out that between Miller, Lenahan, and the high school, we had a lot of students start History Day this fall. The theme this year was breaking barriers in history. And Lenahan was planning to send five exhibit boards to the district contest, and Miller had a paper and a website in the performance. And we at the high school had a paper perform as an exhibit to enter. Then we went into spring break. COVID-19 hit, we didn't come back. The contest was supposed to be two weeks later at Central College on March 25th, and obviously we hit barriers. The contest went virtual. It was hard for all the kids to get together, especially groups of students. So a lot of our students were not able to enter the contest. However, we did get three Marshalltown groups entered. And I am pleased to say that two of them, like you heard, did qualify for the state contest, and that's Claudia Hernandez's paper on Sorwana de la Cruz and Jason Strand and Avery Bowler's performance on Alice Paul. So I'll let them talk now, if you can find them. And the state contest is May 4th, so they're working on improvements to get there and enter again.
I have AVR, but what was the other student's name?
Jason Strand is her partner for performances. And Claudia Hernandez was our paper writer.
I see Claudia in there. Susan, do you know if Jason is calling in?
I have no idea, I haven't heard from him today.
Okay. Well, let's, let's let Claudia talk about her essay. And then I know it sounds like Avery and Jason partnered on their project.
Correct.
Jason's able to, we'd love to have him speak, but Avery, I'm sure would be able to describe the project, obviously, as well, so. Okay, Jason is on under his mom's name, it looks like.
And what's her name?
Under Frances.
Okay.
Strand. Strand.
There we go. All right, I think I have everybody promoted.
Hey, Claudia, why don't you go first?
Okay. Well, I'm Claudia Hernandez. I did my paper over Sorwana Inés de la Cruz, and she was a poet and writer in 17th century colonial Mexico. Um, a lot of her writings advocated for women's rights in a time that weren't really allowed. And she was kind of considered one of the first feminists during her time, and she was really an advocate for breaking barriers for women in colonial Mexico.
Thank you, Claudia. And now Jason or Avery.
Oh, my God. Avery, you're muted.
Okay, so Alice was a suffragist in America that used radical tactics that she learned in England when she went to college, such as hunger strikes, picketing, and holding parades to help ratify the 19th Amendment. Okay. Another reason why we chose Alice, because this year, 2020, we celebrate 100 years of women being able to be politically involved. Jason and I present our project through performance. There are many other ways to present, which you mentioned earlier. And last year, we made it to state finals, and this year, we're hoping to make it to Nationals.
Yeah, yes. So, um. That is our topic, Alice Paul, brave American suffragist. And fingers crossed we'll make it on to Nationals this year.
Any questions from anyone on these? By the way, the performance has to be videotaped, and we're submitting the videotape. Any questions?
When is Nationals?
Um, it's usually in June, and I'm guessing it's gonna be pushed back two weeks, like all the other competitions, because states usually like the last week of April, but now it's like the first and second week of May. So it'll probably be in the middle to end of June. And it's virtual this year.
National generally takes place in Maryland, but this year, since it's virtual, we won't go anywhere, but it'll still be exciting to make it. So.
Any other questions from anybody? Well, thank you, guys. Good luck and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Hi, thank you.
And we do have B back. B, do you want to see if things improved?
Let's have Sean continue, and we'll see how long this lasts.
Okay.
I would have gladly ceded control back to you, B.
Oh, you're obviously doing fine, because you're not in the same place on the agenda when everything went black in my world, so keep going.
So, well, moving on to the consent agenda, we've got minutes from our April 6 regular board meeting. Any changes or corrections on that? Anything in personnel, Dr. Shudey, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, I just want to bring your attention to the retirement of Janet Shepherd. She is retiring after almost 29 years here. She started her career as a para, and then she ended it as our front desk or our district's receptionist here at Central Office. Her commitment to children and the staff of our district will always be remembered. And speaking personally, I really appreciated how she welcomed me to the district with open arms. And I'll forever be envious, as I wrote there, of her ability to remember faces and names. She was very gifted in that department. She will be missed, and we're very grateful for all of her years of service, almost 29 years.
Yeah, and also within the personal items, we've got a recommendation for hire for co-principals at Miller Middle School. We've got Mrs. Kristen Kell, who has a BA in history and secondary ed from Loris College in Dubuque, and MA in curriculum instruction with emphasis and teaching English as a second language from Buena Vista, and degree in educational administration from Iowa, from the Iowa State University. She's served as a teacher and teacher leader for Marshalltown before having served the last five years as a BCLUW high school principal. So we welcome Kristen back to Marshalltown. And then Mr. Dave Glenn, who received a BA in science from the University of Iowa, and MA in educational administration from the Iowa State University. He has served as a teacher, teacher leader, and assistant principal in Colonnesco and Ankeny before having served the past four years as the assistant principal at Miller Middle School. This new co-principal configuration is able to happen as a result of our current middle school principal, Mr. Pat Ryle, transferring to the high school to assume Justin Ballmer's position as assistant principal, Justin Lee. Justin leaves us to become the new lead principal at Roland Story. So we're super excited about this transition for both the high school and middle school. And Kristin and Dave have been invited to join us to say a few words as well. Dave, are you able to speak yet?
Yes. Hi, I'm here. So it kicked me off right for a second, so I wasn't quite sure what had happened. Yeah, I just want to echo what Dr. Shudey said about my level of excitement of being able to embark on this journey with Kristin. In the short opportunity, as I've had, to visit with her, I think we're gonna make a great team. And I think really excited for the way things are shaping up for Miller and the prospects for some really special things happening there. So thank you for the opportunity.
Kristin was concerned with issues they had with Zoom, but Kristin, are you there?
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I echo what Dave said. We've only just met a few times, but I'm really excited to continue the good things that are going on at Miller. And I'm excited for Dave and I to take it to the next level and kind of venture on this co-principal journey with him. We've kind of both been in different realms from small schools to big schools. I'm really excited to be back in Marshalltown. It will be nice to be back home. And I thank Farron and the school board for this opportunity and taking the chance on me. And I like how Farron, you emphasized the Iowa State, but you didn't emphasize the University of Iowa when you were introducing Dave, so I just wanted to mention that. But again, I am so excited for this opportunity and excited to be at Miller and to be part of Bobcat family.
There's a university in Iowa City, Kristin?
Yes, yes, there is. Mr. Miller.
I didn't know. No, thank you.
I think you have a child there, actually.
Oh, not right now, I don't. Congratulations, both of you.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it.
Okay, inter-agency agreements. We've got an agreement with Executive Speakers Bureau for a couple of, I think those are virtual, aren't they, Dr. Shudey?
Correct.
Those two virtual presentations for school district staff, April 23rd and May 14th. An agreement with YSS to provide student services to districts, to students on district One student to Iowa City and one to Sioux City. Any questions about any of those things?
Do we evaluate speakers like this?
Traditionally, like when it's embedded within our professional development, we do with our staff. This will be a little bit unique, being outside of ours, but we certainly can do the same thing here. So the answer to that is yes. That's usually embedded within all of our professional development.
So open enrollments, one in and two out. Paulette, is there anything of note in bills or in the monthly financials?
No, there's none.
Gifts, grants, and bequests, we've got the STEM Scale Up Award for differentiated math center units for K-4 schools in Lenahan, and the STEM Scale Up Program Grant for Project Lead the Way Cyber Security at Marshalltown High School. We've got the 2021 Marsh Town Learning Academy Handbook. That's what we saw last week. No changes from what was presented last week, were there, Dr. Shudey?
There were not.
And then we've got a couple more graduates from the Marsh Town Learning Academy. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
I've got Miller with a motion and McGinnis with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any public comment? I think, Paulette, you said no one had emailed in with anything.
Correct. I received no written emailed comments.
Okay. And we'll move on to the education portion of the agenda. We've got the COVID-19 Continuous Learning Services update from Dr. Shudey, Dr. Stevenson, Lynn Large, and Amy Harpson.
So I had asked members of our administrative team to give some updates in their respective arenas as of late. As everybody knows, the governor announced on Friday closure for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, which I don't think came as a surprise to too many people. I think it's important to remember that our board had previously approved in order to mitigate any additional anxiety or concern amongst our employees, that our intention was and still is to pay all employees through the end of their contract or their regular school year for this year. And we've been working hard to try to find substantive ways to keep those employees engaged in working, particularly are classified through professional development and other ways that make sense as we continue down this journey. Also, with the governor's announcement was an announcement on the cancellation of spring athletic activities, which I know was extraordinarily disappointing for a number of our student athletes and coaches as well, but is understood under the current circumstances as Marsh Town particularly continues to move towards a peak with this virus and the virus spreading. There was also an announcement from the governor about a waiver for the calendar start date for next year, so we will continue to evaluate whether putting forward an alternative start date in the future is something that we want to do or not moving forward. The, there's a lot of, obviously, activities that are being impacted, whether that means cancellation this spring or possible postponement. So a lot of those things are high school related, so I know this is why it's going to specifically, hopefully, communicate to our parents and our students what the plan is going forward as far as high school grades and credits for this year. And there's gonna still be some unanswered questions as to what may or may not happen moving forward in terms of typical end-of-the-year activities. I would say first and foremost, graduation being one of them. But again, I want to thank B for sending a very complimentary email out to our district level administrative team. Without any question, I think everybody on the team is working 24/7, working harder than they probably ever have worked in their career in terms of trying to stay on top of not only what we need to do for the present time, but planning ahead, whether it be for things like, can we make summer school happen? What's next year look like? If we can start on time or if we start earlier? What if we're not fully able to open at the beginning of next year? There's a lot of unknowns and question marks yet that, if not consuming people's physical time, it's certainly consuming their mental time as we try to figure out how to be proactive and improve things going forward. So I want to commend both, all the staff, really, that we have all the 900-plus employees for their role in doing everything possible to make this transition to virtual learning or packet learning and feeding people, providing access to technology. I mean, there's a lot of different moving parts, communicating effectively with people on Adam's behalf. Just a lot of people have really risen to the occasion to try to help with these very challenging and stressful times for everyone involved. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Stevenson.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few things to share with you regarding what's been happening during closure from the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department. We launched our Learn From Home website last Sunday, a week ago Sunday, and that website should serve as a one-stop shop for all of our PK-12 families. It's a great effort, a great collaborative effort that was created. Dave Stanfield is the designer of the website, and he worked collaboratively with me and our CPDLs, Curriculum Professional Development Leaders, preschool director, English language learner director, to make sure that every one of our 400-plus teachers has a spot on that site. So what you'll see is weekly, teachers are meeting in teams on Mondays and Tuesdays, grade-level teams, department teams, to think about their lessons they want to plan for the week. And then they break off on Tuesday, Wednesday, et cetera, to, thanks for who's ever pulling this up. There's a few different ways you can get to the website. But there are lessons being created as we speak during the week by PLCs. We have elementary schools working together in partners. They're designing digital-based lessons for the Learn From Home website with the goal that everything is completed by the end of the day Thursday. So we followed some recommendations from the Department of Education about how many minutes a day of learning is appropriate during this time of crisis. So every grade level has a little bit different look in terms of minutes of instruction. As always, we're encouraging people to use digital curriculum that we've had in place that kids are very familiar with, including ST Math and Lexia. And on Thursday, a lot of magic occurs. Those teacher lessons that were created and made all get taken over into certain Google folders in Google Drive and cleaned up so that on Friday, the paper packet party can begin. We have a para educator or secretaries or combination thereof at all of our school sites, as well as Mickey England here at central office and Maria Ramirez working in conjunction with Rex and his team to create paper packets for all of our students who either don't have internet access or have adults helping them at home who prefer helping them with paper instead of technology. So we passed out paper packets last week on Tuesday and saw the biggest jump in lunches served that day. So I think the kids are excited to come get their materials. And then this week, we started distributing them on Monday, which is our plan, is that the new content goes live on Sunday, so families that do work can have a look at it and plan out their week for kids. With that being said, just so you can kind of picture what's happening, Rex has six buses that leave the bus barn every morning around 11:00 or so to go out on their routes around town to deliver lunches and other things. And we have a Rover car that's following those buses. And in the car, there's a box with these folders, envelopes, I should say, that have packets created in them. So we're working to reduce our paper waste. We know the first week, we made too much of things we didn't need, and we can kind of predict how many kids are gonna show up at each of the bus stops, as well as how many of the kids are showing up at each of the nine schools that are serving lunch. So we're working on reducing that. And then the second feedback we got was that the paper packets were not so great for people who don't have internet, which, of course, we took that into consideration and attempted this week in Week Two to have lessons that were more unplugged, things you can do with your kids without a device. So that was something that's been going on in that area. As a point of reference, on the buses, Week One, we passed out 518 packets last Tuesday. Today, I'm hearing on the buses that we passed out 275 packets. So I'm not exactly sure why the great decrease. My guess is people are figuring out ways to either get access to Wi-Fi or maybe they're thinking that the bus will be back tomorrow. I don't know, because we had some pretty nice weather today. The schools, I don't have the Week One total for the schools, but today, the school's passed out 149 packets. So without the high school numbers included in here, we passed out packets today to 424 children between the ages of pre-K and 12, pre-K through 12. So we'll keep doing that work because we know that that's important to keep kids in a routine of learning. And for many, those first couple weeks that we had sent home material to the kids, it was kind of game-based and keeping them busy, thinking that we'd be coming back to school. And then in Phase Two, when we had that longer stretch of time, what teachers did when they planned those lessons was think about previously learned material as sort of a review for students. And now, moving forward, starting Monday, the 27th, those lessons, online and in paper, will include new content and new standards. And so I'll be working with the principals tomorrow morning to talk through what that looks like, and then we'll be sharing that with teacher teams for next week. The last thing that I wanted to share with you, in terms of thinking about, or second-to-last thing, I'm sorry, about learning from home, is that we use a system called Clever. And Clever is like a one way to get into your computer without having our kids to get into Chromebooks without having to remember a whole bunch of passwords. And so I asked Dave Stanfield for some analytics from our Clever data, because our Google website, we don't have that quite yet. And as of the last week, we had 2,920 students who did log into their Chromebook and use And that equates to 29.4% of our students. So we're really, really hoping that as time goes on, you know, the repeated messaging is hitting the right ears and that parents are listening to, for example, what the governor said Friday, that even though this is considered voluntary, it's critical to get this practice and keep learning, because 30% is not where we want to be. And then some of you heard me talk quite a bit about things like Lexia and ST Math. Those are things our kids are very familiar with. So in terms of Lexia, which is used in our P, I'm sorry, K-5 classrooms, we've had 5,500 students log in just in the last seven days, 5,500 logins for Clever through Clever to Lexia. And then PowerUp is what our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders use. It's the secondary version of that. We've had 1,400 students log in, student logins during the last seven days. And ST Math, which I'm happy to report is in Year Three and still moving along in a great way, we've had 7,300 logins, student logins, in the last week. So that's great. We're really excited that our kids are comfortable using that kind of game-based learning that we have with ST Math and Lexia, and now we hope that that learning carries over into our Learn From Home website. And lastly, I wanted to share, some people are wondering what teachers are up to during closure. In addition to planning lessons and hosting daily office hours and attending meetings, they've been doing some professional learning. So during that Phase One closure, which was the first couple weeks, first two to three weeks, I say, we had our teachers participate in Google certification, and that ended on April 7th. And then, and we're currently in Phase Two of professional learning for our teachers, and they are taking a three-week course called Culturally Creating Culturally Responsive Classrooms, which is taught through a company called SupportEd. And they're in building-based groups, learning this content together for three weeks. It's a 15-hour course. And then we're currently working with the AEA so that when that ends... And then we're currently working with the AEA so that when that ends on April 30th, we can talk about moving from May 1st to June 5th into some online learning through the AEA that will help teachers become more comfortable with teaching online as well as other topics that they can choose from.
There are questions for either Dr. Shute or Dr. Stevenson before we move on to Amy or Lynn?
I don't have a question, but I have received some compliments from parents on the website for distance learning. They find it easy to work with and they're pleased with it.
Thank you.
I want to say the same thing. As a parent, I was able to so it is very user friendly. Oh, they did the job.
Can we get Bee back in as a panelist?
Bee is in as a panelist and I think she's joining audio by phone. So I had allowed her to talk. And then I just muted it because she was in and out a little bit. So.
Okay, I saw she was in the, in the chat box and I just want to make sure that you saw her.
Yes, she is now back in.
We said, did you say Power Up is six, seven and eight? Or just seven and eight?
Power Up?
Yeah.
Um, that's sixth, seventh and eighth.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will jump in now to kind of piggyback on some things that Lisa said. My main part in this is to try to ensure these kids have access to technology. So my team has been working really diligently to get some things in place to ensure we can get these Chromebooks out to kids. And then we've been working with principals and then their buildings to contact these families now that we kind of had the original push to get Chromebooks out. Now we're actually contacting families. We did a Facebook and Infinite Campus survey to see who has internet. And we got about a 60% response to that. And then we actually went back and asked principals to have paras and teachers actually call, email, do anything they can to reach the rest of families. So currently we're sitting at about an 85% response rate for who has internet in our district. We see that out of the people who have responded, we have 73% of students who have internet and 11% of students who don't. Obviously, we still have some work to do. We're trying to still contact the rest of the 15% of the families who didn't respond. And we are working in conjunction with JBS currently. I sent them the list of the actual names of people so that they could tell us and help us get the responses for the folks that worked for them if they didn't respond. So they're still helping us and then we'll do a final phone call push, especially for the high school as we work to get those kids who are dual enrolled access to the internet. So it's really important for us to know who has internet and who doesn't. And then for us to continue to investigate how we might help those people who don't have access. Finally, I wanted to share our Chromebook checkout results. So far to date, we've checked out 1,891 Chromebooks to pre-K through sixth grades. The seventh through 12 already had Chromebooks. So we have a percentage of about 70% of Chromebooks that have been checked out to elementary kids and about 72, 73% Chromebooks that have been checked out to Lenahan. And what I, what I mean by percent is the percentage of the fleet that we had available is checked out. So we can say that probably 72% of kids in Lenahan have their Chromebook. So that's where we're currently sitting and we are still continuing to do the work to get people more access that they need.
Questions for Amy?
So for, um, I guess my question would be, you know, we're trying to get to see if kids are, have or don't have internet. Is that just for the purpose of being able to track the kids that are on Lexia? Because we can do that, right? Or, I mean, are we trying to get them internet? I mean, what?
There has been no decision, decision on whether or not we would actually try to get all of these kids internet. But we have already ordered 150 hotspots. And we know that we want to at least try the seniors who are dual enrolled, who don't have internet. We want to try to get them internet in some way so that they can get those credits easier by being able to have the access that they need for at least the ones who are actually dual enrolled, taking MCC courses and they can get those credits. So that is, there's kind of a priority on the kids that would be dual enrolled. And then we just continue to investigate internet options as they come up because as we see money is being available to us for that sort of initiative, then we can act quickly and know who doesn't have access. So right now it's just investigation, but hopefully it'll allow us to act on it quickly if that, if the ability comes up.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Amy?
Have you been able to reach all of the high school students that are dual enrolled? Because that would seem to be a priority.
No, we have not, but that's not for lack of trying. We have, we definitely have an emphasis of priority on the high school. And that's why we're doing things like even reaching out to JBS, trying to figure out different avenues of reaching those kiddos because we have called them, we've, we've done everything but carrier pigeon to try to get a hold of those kids. So yes, we're continuing to do everything we can and we do have an emphasis on, on those kids specifically.
And it seems to me that if they're dual enrolled in college classes, those students should be reaching out to you as well. They are close to being released as adults into our society. They could make some effort.
Lynn, I'm, I'm ready for you if you're ready to go.
Yep.
Okay, great. It's hard to believe that we're already through our fifth week of the Meals Close to Home program. Since we started the program, coming back in March, the week of March 16th, we've seen the participation in our meals double, more than double actually. And on average, we're serving just close to 1,400 kids a day. So compared to a normal school day, that's about 35% roughly of the normal meals we would serve on any given day at school. So I feel really good about the success of this program and that we're reaching the kids in Marshalltown that truly have a need. And, you know, I have to give a huge shout out to Rex and the whole transportation department because the mobile bus routes have made this program flourish. We're actually seeing more meals distributed on the bus, the, the six bus routes than at the 10 building sites. So that's really positive. On any given day, it's about 900 meals going off those bus routes and then about 500 meals out of the school building. So that's pretty fun to see the kids coming out to the bus to get a meal to take home. We are offering breakfast and lunch each day in a bag. They, they grab it, they take it home to eat it. And then on Fridays, students can also take a breakfast and a lunch for both Saturday and Sunday if they desire to have it. So we really hope that we're filling that need for these families and bridging the gap to help them get through this tough time. And then of course, you know, the collaboration between the transportation department, the food service department has been wonderful. And I also just can't say enough positive things about the food service staff and supervisors. They've been really excited just to try new things and to do whatever it takes to get these meals into the hands of the kids. And that's the most important thing right now. And we're just having a lot of fun trying some new methods of feeding.
Any questions for Lynn? You got up easy, Lynn. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Marshawn High School grading options. Is Jackie, Mrs. Wyand?
I'm here.
Hello, Mrs. Wyand.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here and talk about these options. We have a lot of people concerned and interested in what's going on at the high school. I think we have some slides. So we have a letter that was translated today into Spanish after some, some changes to match a video presentation. And so Amy, why don't we go ahead and start with the, with the slides? Thank you. So students will have some options available to them. And there's a video that's been created and will be posted immediately following the board meeting tonight. So the purpose of the presentation is to explain to the students the three options that are available to them. And something that they will have to think carefully with their parents and with their school counselors as they make some decisions about their courses and the work that they've done either during the first six weeks of the semester for non dual credit classes and for the remainder of the semester for our students enrolled in those concurrent classes. And so I just provided some contact information and we'll go ahead and skip a couple of slides here, Amy. So the first option that students will have is the opportunity to take the grade that's currently represented in Infinite Campus. And for some students, they had completed all of their work before they went on spring break. And so they may be pleased with what's currently represented there. Some students may not have, or some students didn't have the opportunity to work with the student or the teacher to relearn some things and redo some assessments, which we would normally do during our, what is called E and R or I'm, or our multi-tiered support system. So we have that every single day and teachers pull in students and they reteach things to them. So students will have some time where they can work with their classroom teachers and get the work that occurred between January 21st and March 6th and get those grades up to snuff if they like. So of course, we want students to have a passing grade so that they can go into the next course, even though we know that there's a little bit of learning that's been shortened in this time. Next slide, please, Amy. It's important for students to understand also, this is really, really important for them to understand that we will continue, when we place a letter grade on the transcript, it does impact their GPA. And the letter grade will continue to, if it's passing, to provide high school credit for the semester. So they're not being shortened in any way whatsoever. They will have a little bit of time and they will have all the way to May 28th to work on that. The work that they have that's missing. And again, they should discuss with their parents, guardians and the school counselor, how taking the letter grade is going to impact their GPA. The second option is to take pass and no pass. Pass and no pass at the high school does not impact the GPA. It does grant the credit if you earn a P for passing. Again, the P will be determined based on the percentage that's represented in Infinite Campus. And students should continue to work with their teachers to complete any work, to do retakes and any redos. They also have till May 28th to make that decision. And so just to clarify, in our course guide, 59.5% is passing grade. And anything less than that is not a passing grade. Getting a passing grade will allow a student to continue onto the next course in the sequence of a course path, pathway. However, a no pass and also a failure may impact whether or not a student can go on in the course pathway. And so we really want students to work with their counselors, go ahead, Amy, and their parents to understand that. So again, the P does not impact the GPA. It does give a credit. The NP not passed will not calculate into the GPA and will not give credit. Again, can't say it enough times, students need to work with their counselor and their parents when they make these decisions. Finally, dropping the course is the third option. And this has to be done in consultation with the school counselor because one of the things is to, if the students enrolled at the high school, they need to have some courses on their schedule. They can't just drop everything. There are some courses that are required and part of the graduation requirement. And even if they don't pass them, there should be some representation that they were a student at Marshalltown High School. So that, that impacts students in grades nine through 11. Obviously, in students in grades 12, we don't want them to drop classes that are required for graduation. The drop deadline for classes is May 1st. So students will need to work with their school counselor in making that decision and their parents. As I previously mentioned, any student that fails or gets an NP will not get credit for the course. And sometimes this impacts their ability to move on to a sequential course in the pathway. Or they may have to retake that class because it fulfills graduation requirements. And I, I also want students to think about their academic eligibility as they make these decisions. We do have guidelines that are provided by both athletic associations in the state of Iowa on the guidance for students' participation in athletics, which includes passing for classes in the semester enrolled. And if they have any failures in that prior semester, they're ineligible for 30 days in any athletic contest in that next event that, or program that they enroll. So there was some, a little bit of conversation about concurrent enrollment. And just to be clear, almost all of them are involved with the teacher and communicating with the teacher. We do have a couple of students that we're tracking down because the teacher hasn't been able to contact them over the last couple of weeks. So I personally ran notes over to a student who doesn't have internet access, but he's in a calculus two class. So we're doing a lot of things that we need to, to help kids stay connected with their teachers. But for the concurrent enrolled students, as we know, those are dual enrolled, they get high school and college credit. Next slide, please. And so in terms of their high school credits, they have a little bit of control in terms of their Marshalltown Community College credits. All of that has been determined by Marshalltown. The, the teachers came back online on the 25th. These classes include Project Be the Way. Next slide. Some of the students will end up, like the certified nurses aides are going to end up with an incomplete, which on our transcript means they were not eligible for their next athletic season. So we will be very mindful of what's happening with those students and they'll have to have a little waiver because they have absolutely no control over that incomplete because they cannot complete their clinicals until it is safe to do so. Our current technical classes, students are going into the MCC and working on their labs. And we actually have some students who are still working with those businesses that are open and serving meals to go. Finally, our concurrent students can make a decision about their high school transcript, transcript and how they want their course learning to be represented again on the high school transcript. They get to use any one of the three options that we previously reviewed, which includes again, taking the letter grade as it appears in Infinite Campus, which will have an impact on their GPA. Slide two. The option to take the pass, no pass, which will not impact their GPA, but will still give them the high school credit. And it's important for our students going on to college to really think about how a pass, no pass may appear on their transcript for college admissions. And especially for those special programs that have particular admittance, admittance requirements like an engineering class over at the Iowa State. So that's important. Again, consult, consult your school counselor. And finally, their MCC transcript is dictated by Marshalltown. And finally, their MCC transcript is dictated by Marshalltown Community College. So the grade that appears in Infinite Campus will be the grade that appears on their transcript at MCC and will be calculated into the MCC GPA, as well as grant the MCC credit. And so we included that contact information there for MCC if they have any concerns about their MCC transcripted grade. So how will students notify the school about their decision? On the next slide, we are going to send out emails to personally to students. Again, they have till May 28th to make that decision. We are also sending a mailing that was prepared today in both English and Spanish with a document or a form in English and Spanish that students can fill out and return to the school if they don't have internet access. But we wanted this information to go home in a letter to all households to make sure that everyone is accessing the information, whether online or through that paper document and fully aware of the choices that are available to them. So next slide just basically is acknowledging that, you know, they have a lot of questions. And there's just a few of the questions that they're still asking about. What about my capping gown? What about my stuff I left in my locker? So those are things that our team will be tackling first thing in the morning. We've already started processing some of it. And we just need to set up some times and dates and capping gowns. We've already got a date for those, so we're good. And the last slide just includes a lot of contact information for our students and parents in terms of our grade level teams and how to get ahold of them. Any questions?
Well, this circles back to what we were just talking, you talked about taking materials to the calculus student. How close are we being able to get a hotspot to him so he would have internet access?
That would be Amy's question.
The answer is I don't really know. I'm hoping sometime this week we'll get the delivery, but we don't have the hotspots yet to give out. But they have been ordered a few weeks ago and have been shipped.
So one of the other things that, when I visited with our staff this morning and we were talking about virtual meetings with them, is one of the things that I shared is that you can, when you contact a student by phone or by text message or by remind, the teachers can send out the phone number and the password or passcode for a virtual meeting. And just like we have Ms. Niblock joining us via phone, students can do the same thing. They can join via phone. And so that's, that was, I think, just a little technology piece. It may have slipped some of the teachers' minds as they think about their meeting times. And so that's a quick thing to do. Again, if they're already maybe making contact via phone or remind or text message or whatever app they're using, they can just send that link along. And it would be another beneficial thing for our students. Any other questions?
Are there other questions for Mrs. Wyant?
Do you have a sense of when you'll be able to decide what you'll do about graduation?
We, Dr. Shu and I were back and forth on a couple of things. And we, I do know that one third of the students have replied that they would like to have the ceremony, even if it's later in the summer. One third of the parents have indicated the same thing. And we're trying to figure out a, a way to still give them that, that walking across the stage feel. Because I, you know, if, if I had to guess, I don't, I'm not sure that we're going to be ready in the summer. I'm not sure with the, the way things continue to spike. And so we, we're hoping the next couple of weeks there.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Shu, is this an action item?
Yes, we had hoped for it to be an action item. It looked like it was.
Is there a motion to approve the Marshalltown High School grading options due to school closure COVID-19?
Move for approval.
Hernandez, unteed. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyant. We're on to handbooks.
Start with Rex.
Assume I saw Rex in here, so.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay? We reformatted the handbook real quick. On the first page, we added the transportation to and from daycare would be provided if the student qualifies from their primary home address. This goes along with the board policy. So we just put that in there so that was clear. We still work with families on a case by case situation if need be, but this is our primary thing. So we wanted to make sure that was included in there. On the next page, just some changes of some wording in there. Yeah, yeah. Making sure that these families are registering with the school. Sometimes they're calling here, one busing setup, and they haven't even registered at their, at their schools so that the school knows they're coming. So we want to clarify that with them. And the other thing is making sure we can get those letters out. We put some things in place this year. We're hoping to have letters out in late June for early July. We, so we won't be needing to wait as long for registration, which kind of pushes on that backend. So tho, those two changes there, just, you know, when we're getting information to them and that they make sure they get registered with the school and the school and transportation both communicate with them on pick up times, drop off times, if they qualify. If they don't, give them reasons why they don't qualify. Then not the next page, the following page, regular routes. Again, just putting in there about the board policy and reminding them about if they move from one residence to another, into another school zone and they want to stay there, that that is their responsibility to transport their child unless there's an administrative decision there. I work with the principals and stuff on what's happening there. And we work with that. But we just want to again, make sure that was in there and that was clear to parents because we have some that are moving. And they just want that transportation to continue. So we, we work with them. And then down at the lower part of the page, we have some kids, when they get off the bus, they'll start walking down the sidewalk and then they cross right behind the bus. And we're just asking them, never cross behind the bus and reinforce that in our, when we do our bus training with them. And make, get their attention there. Those were all the changes except the last, on the very last page. When you adopt a seatbelt policy, then that would be a part of that. And then just Dr. Ryan put in there versus Josh, Josh when he was there. So those are the only changes to the handbook.
Questions for Rex? I would say I noticed in all the other handbooks that we're going to look at, there's some, there's McKinney-Vento transitional housing homelessness language in there. I don't know if that should be, needs to be in the transportation handbook, but I know there's some transportation stuff that's impacted by that. So I, I don't know. That's more a question than anything else.
We, when we receive those letters, they already qualify. And we just work with the school and the counselor and the family and get everything set up for them.
Okay. Anything else for Rex? Thank you, Rex.
Thank you.
Preschool handbook is next up.
Yes. So thank you to Emily Banks for going in and reviewing our handbook that had a major revision last year to make. It aligned with the Department of Education's preschool audit. So what you'll see in here is a lot of references to IQPPS, which is Iowa Quality Program Preschool Standards. So things that you should note are highlighted in yellow. The only really big changes is that we noted that we are expanding the three-year-old only program from one site to two, which was on page one. So instead of just having that at Fisher, we'll also have a classroom at Hoogland this August or whenever we go back to school. And you'll actually, I think, see that on the personal agenda tonight too. And then on the last page, sorry Emily, or I'm sorry Amy, for making you go back. The other thing that you wanted to know is, might want to know is, we cleaned up some transportation language on the end. Transportation is on the, in the end of the preschool handbook because when we first had a preschool program, we didn't have transportation. So this has just been within the last few years. And every year we learn a little bit more and Rex has helped us too. So once Rex's handbook has been approved, we'll go ahead and link the updated link in there. We do have updated board policies linked, but we just wanted the public to understand too, that we are not busing three-year-olds. Unless they are, unless they have an IEP, they're in special education that requires busing. But we do bus four-year-olds. That's not guaranteed due to our limited bus availability and space on the routes that we have. Busing is offered on a first come, first served basis. And we did have some instances this year where that was a challenge. And so we wanted to make sure that we were very clear with families that, sort of like what Rex was saying, that, you know, we might not have any issues busing your child in August with the information you've given us. But if you move or other things happen, it becomes very challenging to add and modify routes. Especially with children that age and sticking to the Department's of Ed's regulations on minutes that the wheels are running or rolling. We also in the past were very stringent on not letting any K-12 students ride on the preschool buses and vice versa. And I wanted to reflect some updated information we received from Des Moines that said, we do have local ability to make some decisions in that regard. So if there is an older sibling and we don't have space, et cetera, we may serve the preschool child on an elementary bus or vice versa. So those are the two big updates that are in the preschool handbook.
Could you explain why we would not want preschoolers on the bus with older children?
Can you repeat that one more time?
I guess I didn't know there was a regulation that you couldn't have three and four-year-olds on the bus with older children. That's puzzling. Why would that be?
Mostly, I think those decisions had been made in the past due to funding streams. So almost everything that happens in terms of serving four-year-olds and statewide voluntary preschool programming is funded, coded, aligned with the budget that we get for that only every year. And that included transportation. So I think that was kind of the rationale behind why we weren't trying to mingle the little kids on the K-12 gen, general ed funded bus routes and vice versa. Does that make sense, Jan? But then we got some updated information this, I don't know, when was that Rex? Maybe like back in February or so? That we, if needed, could allow for that to happen, but it's not best practice for lots of reasons. Because, you know, when you're serving four-year-olds, we're trying to maintain a 10 to one ratio. And we know that's not happening on the big kid buses. We have monitors in place on the preschool buses. We don't have those in place on all the K-12 buses. We do door-to-door pickup with some rules about an adult being present that pick up and drop off. And so I think, you know, I think it's just us being very protective of the four-year-olds and them getting to school safely and back, which had been a system we were really comfortable with, with the preschool only buses. And that's something that we'll strive to do. But I think what this allows us to do is make exceptions with Rex and the family's approval.
So if, if the child had an older sibling to ride with, they would feel a little more protected. I suppose, okay.
Right, possibly, right. So the preschooler could go with the older sibling on that bus. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a complicated situation for lots of reasons. Just even thinking about when buses arrive at the schools and getting the little four-year-old, you know, into the preschool classroom versus, you know, getting shuffled into breakfast or to the playground. And it's a little bit, it's not as safe as we would like it to be. And so that's why we, we reserve the right to try to keep them as separate as possible. But also know that there'll be rare exceptions when we might need to, to change that.
Other questions for Dr. Stevenson? Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevenson.
You're welcome.
Who's here for the elementary handbooks?
I think Ronnie possibly.
I saw him and I think I saw Tim in the Holmgren, in the participants. I don't know if he was just here to attend or if he was going to talk.
I'm here. Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Handbook doesn't have a lot of major changes. One thing that could change based upon tonight's meeting, under attendance on page one, you do have start times there, which could change based on information later tonight. Most of the changes that I made were ease of access pieces under bus transportation. I just simply added the link to the bus district transportation handbook. Page two, we obviously just updated PD days for next year. And I also added a link to the calendar there for parents who may want to see it. Nothing on page three or page four. Page five, again, just simply adding a link so the parents could get the information they may need more quickly. We did add, the McKinney-Vento Act has been added in students in, a new topic, students in transitional housing or homelessness. Just kind of gives the parents a definition of what that act does, what it's for, and gives them Mr. Gosling's number in case they need some support with that topic. And just a simple thing, adding the link to the MCSD school volunteer application on the final page. Otherwise, that are all the changes that the principals and I came up with for this year. Any questions on that?
You addressed my one question, which was going to be the start time thing. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's on for Lenahan?
Hey, yes, can you hear me? Okay, good. I'd never done a Zoom meeting where I was on the, on the outside looking in there. So it was, it was, it was weird for me. I was like, when does this happen? Okay, so our handbook is, for the most part, cleaning up some things to make it more consistent. We changed some food service language in there to address the community eligibility piece that moved up for our students this last year. We changed the headlights piece to be consistent with the K-4 buildings, added the homeless, homeless housing and transitional housing piece in there as well. And then also in anticipation of, of later, we added some changes to our start. And our start time, which I believe is going to be different. I need to change that because I have the, I have our end time wrong. I have it ending at 3:25.
Questions for Mr. Young?
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Young.
Dave, are you representing middle? Dave or Pat?
It looks like Pat's in there, but I don't see Dave anymore.
Pat?
I'm here.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, so if you want to, we got quite a few changes, and we did a lot of cleanup this year. If you look at the main page there, we added some links in there, the important links that parents can see, and then there's an opening letter to not only parents and students. And we updated that with the correct names in there now. And then the table of contents, that's all new. It's not highlighted. I thought that would be a lot of highlighting going on, but that's all new. That way, it gives the user very easy access to what pages they need to go to. And then we added the mission statement, mission, vision, and beliefs. And then on page seven, we have the homelessness, the federal legislation. And then page eight, we have our new start time. Eight twenty-five. And then on page nine, there are the additions of Van Chromebooks. Page 10, 11, and 12, we added class descriptions to our related arts classes. You can see there, the teachers are so kind to do that for us. And then we crossed off the geometry class for eighth grade. Go to page 15. Report cards are just going to be mailed out once a semester. We used to do it each quarter, but with the access to online once semesters, what we decided on. Page 17, we added student PBIS team, which they prepare some of our celebrations and the quarter assemblies and so forth. Page 20, which we have the withdrawal from school, make sure that they turn in their Chromebooks and chargers prior to leaving. Page 21 and 22, academic and athletics, students must be in good standing in all classes for participating contests and performances. Students not in good standing, they will need to meet a teacher's recommendation to participate in contests and performances, making significant progress towards passing as required. And then if we want to go down to page 22, this one's in there new. All students, whether participating or spectating for an MMS event, must have been in tents all day to attend the contest or have approval from a minister. Well, we so find sometimes his kids will miss school all day, but yet they'll show up for an event that night, and that's, we want them in school in order to be at an event. Page 27, we added just some language for backpacks. Their teachers could designate a spot in the classroom to put their backpacks. That way, there's good flow and traffic in the classroom. And also on page 27, we have organizers in each classroom. Basically, they're shoe racks, plastic shoe racks where kids can put their says digital devices, but their phones, basically. So you can do that. And then page 32, just the open enrollment day for next year. Any questions? Hopefully, that's a lot cleaner than it has been in the past, especially with that table of contents in there.
Questions for Pat? I did like the table of contents. That's nice. And I like that the, I assume that'll be the same way when it goes on the website, that all those the end, the table of contents, the page numbers are all hyperlinked, so you can just click on the page number and go right to the page, which is nice.
I just have a comment about the cellphone. I don't think a teacher should have to justify asking a student to put away their cellphone. They shouldn't have to prove that it's interfering with learning. I think you could run into some issues with that. It's a language thing, but it's the type of thing that could be argued. And I think we need to avoid that at the middle school level.
I think, Jan, with the expectation that students are to put their cellphones in those slots when they come into their classroom, if they don't do that, teachers aren't going to, you know, search them or wait them out to put them in there. But if that phone then comes out during class and it wasn't in the slot, that's all the justification that they need.
That's the way it should be. I agree. Okay.
I have a question regarding the a question regarding the semester report card. Will there be a contact with parents then during the other quarters?
It's where our conferences align, they're right on the quarters, our conference times.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume that Jackie is still hanging out to talk about the high school handbook?
I think Mrs. Holsappel will be doing that tonight.
Oh, okay.
Deb, are you there?
Hi, how are you? Hello. I'm here to share with you our handbook. And we really just did a lot of cleaning up of language and different personnel. So I just lost my notes. We on page three, we just added Dr. Ryan's information instead of Anthony's. And then the table of contents will all be updated after it's been approved to be hyperlinked to the sections, because every time we adjust it, it changes. If you go to page nine, we will put in the new class schedule with having the adjusted start time. That's going to change things just a little bit, so that just needs to be updated. Then if you keep going down to sorry, I've lost my notes. We've added the transitional housing and homeless, like the other schools have. And then we updated the mission statement for the district there. Then further down, you'll see some little changes such as dates. Just some more specific wording for more clarity. And like Jan was saying, less chances of argument, I guess you would say, over certain things. So that's really what's been changed as you go through this. The majority of our changes took place down around page 56, where we're talking more about the athletics because of their changes in the different conferences. And that also leads to differences in the suspensions and how many games and things like that. So that's where the bulk of our changes came from. Otherwise, it's pretty much the same. We just need to update the hyperlinks and the actual page numbers once it's approved.
Questions for Mrs. Holsappel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So these will all be back at our next meeting for approval. So tonight was your first chance to ask some questions about them. They'll come back next time for approval. All right. Moving on, Mr. Kretzinger?
Good evening.
You're up.
All right. So following up to last board meeting, I want to talk to you about the multi-tiered system support as it relates to social-emotional learning. I apologize, I got my second screen over here, so I'm gonna be staring over here a whole lot. So I want to start off just reminding us about social-emotional learning and behavior. Amy, have us on the right slide. It's important that we think about social-emotional development is the same as any other area. If a student can't do it, we teach them. Oftentimes, people confuse when we use the phrase "discipline" as in punishment, and really, it has no relationship to it. So if we have a student who's struggling on their social-emotional skills, our obligation is to teach them those skills. Amy, next slide, please. And so we've adopted a philosophy in the district that kids do well if they can. And if they're not doing well, it's because there's something getting in their way. And we talk about lagging skills, and our job is to help them find ways to apply that appropriately. Next slide, please. So just like English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, the state of Iowa this year adopted social-emotional learning standards. And you can see a summary of them in the image. The document's 70 pages for some light reading, if anyone's interested. But essentially, there are five domains and 19 competencies or learning targets they really want us to focus on. And as a district, we knew this work was being developed at the state level. So over the last two years, we've worked with some of our community partners on our AEA to develop what we call our social-emotional learning framework. It's one of the documents I shared, or Dr. Schutte shared with you within news and notes. And so if you want to get down to a deep level of detail about what are we doing across various levels of support, that document will show you everything we're trying to accomplish in our schools and the research behind it. Next slide, please. But beginning with supporting all of our students, we need to establish expectations with them. Marshalltown continues to use positive behavioral interventions and supports as the initial framework we use. And each building has a PBIS team, and they've worked over the years to develop common expectations across settings, classrooms, lunchrooms, hallways, out at recess. Over the last couple of years, we've really focused on trying to avoid some of the common pitfalls that come under PBIS implementation. If you've done it for a while, you sometimes drift into some practices. So the first one is, we don't want to assume that a child knows what's expected of them when they're in your classroom, or in the hallway, or in the lunchroom. We want to make sure we're teaching them those expectations. And teaching them means not only are we running through it with them, but they're having an opportunity to practice them and see what it's supposed to look like. And it's also good to have some examples of what it's not supposed to look like, so they know the difference. We want to teach them multiple times a year. Just like with us, going over something one time doesn't guarantee it's going to stick. So we want to practice it several times a year. And most commonly, you see those practiced after breaks, or any time a building is looking at their data and seeing that there's a common pattern of an expectation not being met. And then one of the big focuses is about acknowledging students when they're doing exactly what we want them to do. In many cases, if you talk about PBIS with folks, they'll tend to think that it's about rewarding kids. And they'll do things like giving tickets, or giving little toys, or giving candy. And that can be part of it. But the development of PBIS was really about acknowledging kids for doing the things we want them to do. And that acknowledgement gives us an opportunity to build a relationship with our kids. So saying, "Nice job, I really like how you're staying connected, you're staying accountable, keeping your hands to yourself, you're focused on your work, doing high fives," any kind of that positive attention is really where PBS came from. So we want to do all we can to leverage those opportunities, develop positive relationships with our kids. Now, how we teach the skills that we talk about begin with our social-emotional learning curriculum for all kids through our guidance. And that's positive action. We've adopted it and began it this year. And positive action gives us an opportunity, once every six days, for either our school counselors to directly or through consultation with a classroom teacher, cover at least one of the lessons in there that line up to the domains shown earlier in the Iowa Social Emotion Learning Competencies. It becomes a little more challenging when you move into the high school, so that's where collaboration and teaching those lessons through homeroom, the homeroom structure becomes unique structure for us. This year, we also brought in capturing kids' hearts. When you move from the middle school and into the high school, it's sometimes difficult to develop really good relationships with students if you're seeing a new face every 45 minutes. So capturing kids' hearts is an evidence-based approach that helps educators learn how to build those strong relationships in those short periods of time. We're really pleased with the training that happened, and we're excited to see what happens as these buildings get more used to working in this structure as well. Next slide, please. Just like we do for academics, for social-emotional needs, we screen students three times a year. We use a tool called the SABR, which is the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Scale. It's a real brief scale. It takes between two and four minutes per student to complete. Teachers completed three times a year, looking at different aspects of a child's social-emotional needs. If within that, after the screener is completed, if we see their total score is elevated, then it gives us an opportunity to look deeper into their data and see if they have further needs. I think one of the big strengths of the SABR, beyond allowing us to be proactive in our service, instead of waiting for things to get so bad that we're reacting, we can also dig a little deeper into the information and see what about their behaviors created that elevated score. So was it something to do with their social behavior? Was it something to do with their academic behaviors that allow them to engage in classwork? Or is something going on with the emotional side of their behaviors and some of those those quiet kids we see in class possibly that might be dealing with anxiety or some of the stressors that don't show up as easily as some of the other behaviors? Next slide, please. So if a student has an elevated scale on SABR, or as building teams come together and they look at their data, you might see students who are also having challenges with attendance, also having challenges with office referrals. This convergence of data then helps teams figure out which students need targeted intervention, which we call Tier Two. There are a variety of different approaches we can use, and I've listed some there. The collaborative problem-solving approach is one of the newer ones that we've been developing further. Each building has a unique structure. So the main guidelines are that each building will have a set of rules that they use to decide which students need intervention, which students don't need intervention, and how are they going to collect data on those interventions to see if they're making a difference? Next slide, please. Now, there are a few students that won't respond the way we want them to, to the work that's being done to this point. And so we move to Tier Three or Intensive Intervention. And at this juncture, we're looking to just intensify and And at this juncture, we're looking to just intensify instruction with them. And what that means is, we're gonna get a little more specific and targeted in what we do. So to intensify instruction, we might teach them more often. We might teach them for a little bit longer. The group size might get quite a bit smaller when we work with them. We might be very intentional and specific on either strategies we use, or instructional materials we select to work with them. But the system stays the same as it did in Tier Two, where buildings will define what kinds of interventions are needed, what kind of data they're gonna collect to decide whether a student is responding to that intervention or not, and what are the guidelines to decide who needs intervention and who's ready to step back into our lower level of intervention. And I think that's really important to think about, is when we're at an intensive intervention like Tier Three, and students are being successful, we don't completely exit them from intervention. We're going to move them backward in the process, the same way we've moved them forward in the process. Now, for a really small number of our students who won't respond to intensive intervention, our AEA has a structure that takes them through what's called Disability Suspected. And that's the introduction of the process to determine if a child would be eligible for special education-related services. So everything we've talked about is Gen Ed to this point. And if a student is found eligible for special ed-related services, then there's an entire continuum of supports in that area that we won't go through tonight. But essentially, it begins with supporting kids in classrooms, and has a variety of steps all the way to being considered for our therapeutic classrooms within our Four Oaks setting. To do this work, it's not something Marshalltown has just done by themselves. So I did want to show you all the organizations that worked together to come up with this continuum of service and this collaborative process, as well as highlight some of the common professional learning we've made available to our staff currently, or look to in the future. Next slide, please. Now, moving forward, I knew that Director Miller most likely would have some questions for me, so I put some information together ahead of time to see if I could answer his questions and read his mind. So, just to make sure the entire board is on the same page, because we've talked about this work a couple times now, over the last few years. During the eighteen-nineteen school year, we spent seven focused hours on social emotional learning as a district. And during that time, between first semester and second semester, we saw forty-three percent reduction in the need to use physical management or restraint and seclusion with a student. So that was a really positive indicator for us. In addition to that, we surveyed both our certified and our classified staff, at least the peer-educator group of the classified staff, to see if they agreed upon the work that we were focused on over that seven hours of professional learning. And you can see the overwhelming majority said, "Yes, we're doing the right work and it is important." Next slide, please. During that same last year, we had developed what we called the Social Emotional Learning Steering Committee. It was made up of about twenty-five members. It had administrators, central office folks, school counselors, school resource specialists, teachers, and AEA staff as part of it. So it was a large group that covered most positions across the district. And this committee developed five goals that they wanted to accomplish during the eighteen-nineteen school year. And you can see those goals in the image on the right. We put out a survey to our staff members, also asking if they felt that the professional learning and the work done in the buildings beyond the learning met those goals, and you can see how well they agreed with those questions. So coming out of the eighteen-nineteen school year, we felt really positive about our work, because we were really shooting for that eighty percent agreement, and in every case, we met that eighty percent threshold. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, because of school closure, some of those data points are hard to share, because we would be in the middle of collecting them right now. But there are some data points I can talk about this school year that continue to inform us we're on the right path. So what you're seeing here is data from the Conditions for Learning Survey. Now, to make sure everyone understands, Conditions for Learning Survey is an anonymous survey given out to all students in sixth through twelfth grade, once a year. It's given out by the Iowa Department of Education, and it is one of those indicators used on the state performance profiles to determine a ranking of our school. The bottom part of the graph in front of you has the eighteen-nineteen school year. And you can see that there's five domains that the questions focus on. Adult-student relationships, emotional safety, expectations and boundaries, physical safety, and student-student relationships. Now, it's kind of hard to follow the way the Department of Ed has moved this data around, because they didn't use the same questions from year to year and change some of the values. So what we were able to do is go in and create a color coding system. Anything in that pinkish, orangish, reddish color, it indicates that we were below the state average in that indicator for that year. And anything in white means that we are at or above the state average in that indicator for the year. So when I look at this information, and I look at the bottom part of the graphic, that's the eighteen-nineteen school year compared to the top part, that's the nineteen-twenty, what that tells me is that our students are reporting that they feel improved student relationships, emotional safety, expectations and boundaries, physical safety, and student-student relationships. We are also at or above the state average of all school districts who have taken this Conditions for Learning Survey. I see a lot of growth here. And if you look at the very left column, that's the composite area, and I'm not gonna get into explaining T-scores, because it's one of those statistic things that will put everyone to sleep really quickly. But essentially, you know, the T-score range is telling us how well we think we're doing comparing information across multiple assessments. If you look about the eighteen-nineteen to nineteen-twenty, we continue to be at or above the state average and show improvement in that area as well. So I know it's a hard graphic to follow, but essentially, our students are telling us that our learning environments are improving from their perspective. Next slide, please. And then our social emotional screener, the Sabers. When we look at data compared to the two times this year we're able to give it out, you can see that between the assessment completed in the fall and winter, there was a significant drop in a number of students that met that some risk, that level of concern or elevated scale across every attendance center here. So that's really exciting news, because it tells me that our teachers have less concern about the social emotional needs of our kids compared, comparatively on this screener. Next slide, please. Now, a new piece of data that we started collecting this year is what we're calling walkthrough data, and it's through this assessment tool called Kickup. As we began this process, one of the things we wanted to do is get direct observational data on how our social emotional skills and social emotional structures being implemented within our schools in a day-to-day. So working with our Area Education Agency, we created a plan where they would walk through every school and look in every classroom. And they would use a rubric to score on fifteen components, what they were observing on the social emotional interaction. Now, they didn't get through all schools before we moved into closure, but they did get through seven of our schools. And so the data here is about seven of our schools. Of the fifteen aspects, when you look at all the schools' information combined, eleven of the fifteen aspects, they have directly observed healthy learning environment interactions. So that's, that's great news, because that's exactly the kind of information we want to see. And we had three areas where they noted we excelled at. And those are positive and respectful interactions among adults in the classroom, students have positive and respectful communication with adults, and our trauma-informed practices. Trauma-informed practices really mean the implementation of collaborative problem-solving to address mental health situations, stress, anxiety, and fears. So that's really good information from our initial walkthrough. We look forward to completing those last three schools and adding it to this data down the road at some point. And the last slide is, what questions do you have for me?
Questions for Matt?
Oh, one question, Matt, you've talked about your therapeutic classrooms. Can you tell me approximately what percent of our students are involved in therapeutic classrooms?
Yeah, the program agreement sets it up, we have three therapeutic classrooms, one's in elementary, one's a middle school, intermediate middle school, and one's a high school level, and we're allowed to have up to six students per classroom. So we consistently stay at that eighteen-student threshold.
And then, the other question actually had to do with one of the graphics you have here, let me find it again. That was, it was the one that was, that was difficult to interpret. The Conditions for Learning Survey? Yes. I'm trying to figure out, like, physical safety. When you've got a score fifty-five, and then you come up here and it's forty-three, I don't know if the fifty-five is better or worse. What do they mean by that? I don't know what that number means.
Well, that's the challenge, is that as they changed the questions and the dynamics of the assessment, they couldn't compare the scores apples to apples. So of the people who took the survey in eighteen-nineteen, fifty-five point six percent reported that they felt that it was a physically safe environment to be in. In nineteen-twenty, forty-three point zero-one percent of the folks. But they changed up the question so much that the Iowa Department of Education didn't feel that they could compare years without going through a T-score conversion.
Okay. So, so generally, it's more positive in the newer scores, but in some cases, it's difficult to interpret.
Yes, that's why I did the color coding, working with our Department of Ed. When they saw that we, in most categories, are at or above the state level, their interpretation was the same as mine, of that's a very positive indicator, and our profile looks better than many school districts in the state. Because just like moving from the Iowa assessments to the ISAS, because of the type of questions that were asked, most school districts saw a drop in their performance scores.
Alright.
Matt, it might be nice to see the average to compare, to compare ours to.
Okay, I can get that for you.
Other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Dr. Stevenson? You're back up.
Yep, and tonight, what I would like is to ask for board action on the next document, sorry, which is the revised bell times, start and end bell times for the twenty-twenty-one school year that I had reviewed at the April sixth, the board meeting. As a reminder, we're adding ten minutes to the student stay at the elementary level. K-four, we're adding five minutes to Lennahan's Student Day, Student Instructional Day, and then also five minutes at Miller and the high school.
Questions for Dr. Stevenson?
You wanna make a motion to approve those changes?
Well, before, are there any questions for Dr. Stevenson? Okay, Jan, I'll take your motion now.
Right, I'm honored that we approved the change in the time times as presented last, as board meeting.
Second. McGinnis, Miller, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
You're still in the hot seat.
Okay, next item is?
The
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, sixth grade, Social Studies, and seven, English Language Arts.
My eyes are glaring, I'm just staring at the screen all day. Yes, so at the April sixth board meeting, I presented for information only, some budget information regarding the elementary social studies adoption, which is a part of our seven-year adoption cycle. So I'm asking for action tonight to approve the requests listed on this document to allow us to update and upgrade our resources for K-six Social Studies to align with the new Iowa Social Study Standards.
May I have a motion to adopt the kindergarten through sixth grade, Social Studies Materials and Curriculum as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Niblock, Faltus?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven-zero.
Um, the second part of that was the sorry, the seven-twelve English Language Arts adoption. That team had also been in curriculum review as part of our seven-year cycle throughout this school year. And on April sixth of the last board meeting, you were presented information regarding the process and the estimated expenses to purchase new English Language Arts resources for core and elective courses at Miller and the high school and MLA. I'm asking for action this evening to approve these budget items.
May I have a motion to approve the seven-twelve English Language Arts material adoption as presented?
I'm so moved, I move that we that, the ELA Materials Adoption Recommendations as presented. Second.
McGinnis Hernandez, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, would say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. Stevenson.
Thank you very much, on behalf of the teachers that were on those teams, and the teachers that will receive those materials, and our students who will get to learn with them next school year.
B, are you ready to go on Habit Twenty-Five of How Not to Be a Terrible Board Member?
Yes. If this continues to work.
Okay.
Okay, twenty-five is about is to the board table. It's assuming that you prefer to ignore the fact that all board members are elected in a nonpartisan way. When you were elected on the ballot, you did not have a Republican or Democratic signature next to your name. Everyone was considered to be apolitical in that regard. So the am I back?
You are now.
Or am I still gone?
You're back.
I think I'm back, so let's forge ahead. And if nobody can hear me, sorry. What we need to understand is that we need to see the issues through the lens of what's best for children of the you were elected to serve all of the people. So you need to see the terms and issues as to what is best for the children of the district. And facing the problems of the district rather than upholding party principles. That's about what I can do for you. Hope you were
Thank you, B.
That's why I had habit twenty-six, do a favor. And what, what the scenario was, was a board member was out walking their dog and their neighbor came running up to him from gardening and started to share a story of concern relative to how her child was being accused of not turning homework in by the teacher and the parent was adamant that homework had been turned in and had been graded differently than was being projected. The parent had a legitimate concern. And it had gotten to the point where it'd been so upsetting to the daughter that the parent was asking the board member to have the daughter moved out of her teacher's class into another class. And the board member tried to appease the parent by sharing some inappropriate confidential information relative to information evidently that board member knew about some medical issues that the teacher was dealing with. It also basically said, I'll talk to the principal and get your child moved, which the board member didn't have the authority to do, so the moral to the story kind of goes back to the appropriate chain of command and how as a board member, you do have a responsibility to provide a listening ear to those types of concerns and then to redirect the parent to making sure that the appropriate steps are taken. So first and foremost, has the parent talked to the teacher about this? If so, and not satisfied, have they taken it to the principal? And if so, not satisfied, have they taken it to the superintendent before expecting the board member to handle it for them? And I think the reinforcement there is just the importance for number one, board members who do represent their, the people of the school community to provide a listening ear, to attempt to provide correct direction in terms of how to walk through that appropriate chain of command. And if nothing else, then, you know, to make sure the superintendent's aware so that they can direct it to the appropriate person and also follow up with the board member. So once a board member has passed that information along, then to ultimately for the superintendent and or other director to report back to the board member in terms of it having been handled.
Anyone else have anything to add to that one?
It's a pretty common occurrence for board members, and so it's really important try to stay the course on, you know, directing people the right way and, and doing what we can. And ultimately, if all else fails, reach out to the superintendent. Let them try to help direct traffic with it.
Right, it, it's a, it's a fairly common scenario where someone has a problem and, and they want you to fix it and, and they haven't done all the things that they need to do. And so being able to redirect them and, and point them back towards where they need to start on the chain of command is, is very important.
As a teacher, I totally agree.
All right, Lisa, you're back up one more time.
Okay, habit twenty-seven is accepting gifts. And in this case, there was a board member who had a conversation with the high school principal and then a different conversation with a different principal. And in both cases, the principals bestowed passes to the board member to allow the board member to get in at no cost to athletic events or fine arts events. And that is a terrible habit, according to what we read, because it could be seen as a bribe by some community members, especially because the board member has the ability to vote on projects that may or may not support one school or another in terms of their facilities. And the recommended action would be to just not use those free passes to pay your own way when attending ticketed school events. And I think that the one thing too that I walked away from that was just the lessons learned at the end was thinking about the importance, especially as you bring on new principals to your district or new administrators, to just remind them of what the policy is in those situations so that you have some consistent language that's gone out to your building administrators about what to do or not to do in terms of those passes. And then that way, you're kind of stopping the problem before it starts. You're not putting the board member in a position where a principal has done or not done something in regards to ticketed entry or things that have a monetary value that they're accepting.
It really helps, as someone who's often had this duty where you're selling these tickets at these events, it really helps to have it written down which people are supposed to get in without paying admittance, whether it's teachers or, or coaches or referees or board members. It can get pretty murky. I mean, it sounds like it should be simple, but it really isn't. And it puts the teacher in a really uncomfortable position. If someone comes up and says, well, I've never had to pay before, but the teacher's been told to have them pay. So it really helps to make all of that clear.
Anything else from anybody? Well, I had the last one, habit twenty-eight, radiate negative energy. The scenario here is that the school board has been engaged in discussion and, and conversation for about a year about closing one particular school building. And on the night of the big vote, they have more discussion and everybody has to say what they want to say, and then they take a vote. And our member is on the wrong side, I guess, in his opinion, of the vote. And so the vote is done, and the meeting is coming to a conclusion. And he has one last thing to say. And he says that this is the worst decision the school board has ever made in all of his years of service. And they've done a disservice to all the kids. And if his, if he was a parent at that school, he would be looking for a different place to send his kids. And so the moral, I guess, to me is summed up in a couple of sentences. The, so the vote has been taken. The decision is now the policy of the district, and your responsibility is to do all you can to make it work. You should strive to assist rather than obstruct the district in its quest to provide high-quality education for everyone. I guess, to me, I, I think it's appropriate to have disagreements. It's appropriate to have conversations about things, and, and we don't all see things the same way. There are difficult votes that are taken at times, and, and they don't go necessarily the way we always want them to do. But once the board takes action, I think it's, it's your responsibility as a board member to support that decision and, and not to get in the way, but to, to help make those decisions work for the best of all the kids in the district. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, we, we have concluded our book study for the year. Hopefully, we've all learned many lessons from our intrepid board member and, and will now not be bad school board members. I think we're over to Dr. Ryan.
All right, thank you. Sean, I can see you on my screen. If I randomly mute, which my computer likes to do, will you just kind of wave your arms? I'll, I'll take my cue from you. It, it works fine. It's just randomly will mute. Okay, so on the agenda, I am asking for the board's approval to move forward with the purchase of two platforms through Power School. One being the applicant tracking. And that is, again, just a reminder from last meeting, is to be able to create customized applications, be more digital, more flexible, and have and, and really easy to make somebody go from an applicant to an employee and affording the directors and the administrators a lot of, a lot more flexibility with looking at those applications. And then also the platform of HR records. And that is to a hundred percent digitize all of our HR documents. And so people can change their profiles there. Just today, I had four emails directly to me, and I can't speak to how many went to my administrative assistant, of emails asking, two of them were like a change address. Somebody was wanting to change their deduction on a, or take extra taxes out on their W fours. So all things like that could be done digitally. And then one that's really relevant to right now. I've got I've got over a thousand pages here on my desk. Paulette did all the, the hard labor there of getting the contracts ready. We'll be sending those out to certified staff this week. It costs a lot of money, obviously, not only to print those, but also to mail. And then we're also including a self-addressed and post, posted, postage letter or envelope for folks to send those back. So there's a lot of money that goes with printing them out, sending them out, and then also providing postage for people to return those. If we're able to get the HR records, everything will be done digitally. This would be the last time we ever have paper contracts. Some of those other requests for me today were, can you send me a copy of my old contract? I don't have it. So everything like that would be able to be viewed online. So again, it's the applicant tracking platform and the records platform. The cost right now is twenty-six thousand one hundred. Moving forward in future years, it is eighteen thousand. There's that extra amount for that implementation. So I'm asking the board to move forward, and I'll, I'll take any questions that you may have. I did present that information last time.
Any questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the purchase of Power Schools as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Untied. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much. This is going to make us a lot more efficient and effective, so I am really grateful. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ryan. Is Chuck here?
I am.
Hey. Okay, Chuck, we've got the summer buildings, the summer project list.
I have before you the list of summer projects that we have put together for the schools and we have highlighted some of the projects. We've put an asterisk in front of some of the projects that are relevant to our master facility plan. For example, Franklin, we're going to, we would like to replace some furnaces. The high school, we would like to replace a lot of the asphalt. It's not asterisk beside all of them, but it, it does include all of them. The auditorium lot, the band lot, the Bobcat Boulevard, and the frontage road that goes to the west of the stadiums. We are looking at steam pipe replacement at Miller Middle School. And also some doors at Woodbury, which are not ADA compliant. The total for all of these projects is four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Back to the flat work, the asphalt work at the high school. This exceeds the threshold of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So this will have to go out to public bid. We are looking at getting that documentation prepared so that we can have it in front of the board by the next board meeting so that that can go out, so that we can secure those bids.
Questions for Chuck?
This might be a question for Paulette, but we have this money?
Yeah, yes, we set aside about five hundred thousand every year out of PEPL for summer projects.
Thank you.
And Paulette, maybe we don't need to, but for newer members, a short explanation of PEPL?
Yeah, of course. So PEPL is Physical Plant and Equipment Levy. We are able to assess a property tax to collect this revenue. And then we use our PEPL money for buildings and grounds projects. We now pay for our copier lease out of there. Our building lease out of there. We shifted some instructional, some non-instructional software to PEPL. So we, we allocate the whole, it's about one point two million per year, and we have that allocated out between buildings and grounds. Transportation, we use it also to purchase buses and vehicles.
Other questions for either Chuck or Paulette about the summer project list? If not, I may have a motion to approve the summer project list. And I guess that would be to direct the, to obtain quotes or bids for those projects. Is that right?
So moved.
Second.
Niblock Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Chuck, we've got the soil testing contract for the tennis complex.
As everyone is well aware, we are entering into the racket complex. It's going to be starting very, very soon. And we have secured through FEH a, some bids for soil testing. We have two bids. One is from Terricon. And the other one is MTP. Regardless, there is a disparity between the two bids of a couple of thousand dollars. And Terricon, actually, their bid is slightly higher. However, I am recommending that we move toward working with Terricon simply because they were the company that did all of the work for us. Uh, simply because they were the company that did all of the work for us for Phase Two. Uh, they are very familiar with our site. They did the coring analysis on the existing tennis courts. Uh, we had that accomplished a couple of months ago. And they were the ones who who looked at the coring samples to establish what the base was, uh, beneath the existing site. And I have a, a high comfort level working with this, with this company, uh, specifically because of their familiarity with the district and the site. So I am, I am recommending that we move toward working with Terricon on this project.
Questions for Chuck about this one? I, I would say, I mean, in, in, uh, reviewing that letter from FEH, it does help to explain the disparity in, in their estimated cost.
Right, and there, there are a lot of things that, that don't compare apples to apples. I hate to use the analogy, but there are some things that just don't compare. But once, uh, Kevin from FEH put it together, it's an hourly based type contract. And once he put those together and put them side by side, it made perfect sense to me.
May I have a motion to approve contract with Terricon for soil testing services for the racket complex as presented?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Faltis McGinnis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, we've now arrived at B's favorite part of the board meeting. Policies.
So I can, uh, go ahead and take the lead on this. With the first readings, as, as you might recall, Dr. Ryan brought forward three policies at the last meeting. New policy on nepotism, another on fraternization, and another on resignations of certified personnel. And then Director Kozak, our transportation director, brought forward six policies in relationship to transportation, uh, some of which were new or amended, all of which align with the transportation handbook that he brought forward. And then there was one policy that Board Director Faltis had relative to, um, a regulation on the United States flag procedures. And we simply made amendments to make sure that what we had in that regulation aligned with current federal law. So I would recommend that those policies, uh, be approved and have the second reading waived. There have been no changes to those since they were presented to the board at the last meeting.
Okay, our, remind me, I know you just said it, but are are these all new, or any of these changes? I mean, uh, amendments?
Yeah, the first three policies that Dr. Ryan brought forward were new policies.
So that's four oh one, three, four oh four, two, and four oh four, seven?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt, um, four oh one, three, four oh four, two, and four oh four, seven, and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Niblock Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Those are adopted seven zero.
Yeah, so then we had three policies in transportation that we did not have that were new from ISB. That would be seventy-one point two R one, student conduct on school transportation. Seventy-one point two R two, use of recording devices. Um, seventy-one point seven on school bus safety instruction. And seventy-one point nine district vehicle idling. So those would be new policies adopted, we're adopting the ISB policy. We did not previously have those in our handbook.
Okay. So may I have a motion to adopt seven eleven R two, seven eleven two R one, seven eleven three, seven eleven seven, seven eleven nine, and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Niblock Hernandez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Those are adopted seven zero.
And then strictly amended policies would be seventy-one point two, student conduct. Uh, seventy-one point three extracurricular activity, bus services.
And nine oh seven?
And, uh,
nine oh seven R one?
Yep, correct.
So may I have a motion to amend seven eleven two, seven eleven three, and nine oh seven R one, and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Niblock Faltis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Or as the initial reviews, um, the first policy, two oh six point three on secretary treasurer, we're recommending that be simply marked as reviewed. And then there are eleven other policies, all of which deal with the board, so they're out of the two hundred series that were recommended as, um, either changes or, um, additions from ISB. So those are two eleven on open meetings. We're recommending adopting ISB to a one point seven organization of the board. We're recommending adopt ISB to a one point eight vacancies. We're recommending adopt ISB's policy. Two oh four point four annual meeting. Uh, we've simply added a paragraph to our policy from ISB. Um, two oh four point five R organization of meeting procedures. We're recommending that we align ours to match ISB's. Two oh four point six notice of board meetings. We want to adopt ISB's. Two oh four point nine agenda and order of regular business. Um, ISB actually rescinded theirs, so, um, I need to follow up with them to see if they're planning to replace that. Or actually, I think we can probably, we may be able just to keep ours, but I need to follow up with them on that. Two oh four point seven quorum for meetings. We want to adopt ISB. Two oh four point one two minutes of meetings. Um, we want to retain ours, but take the closed session segment of ours out because there'll be a separate policy speaking to closed sessions. Two oh six point one, new board of directors, uh, member development training. Um, we would add some ISB language to ours. And then four oh one point one R two, the code of professional conduct and ethics regulation. There are some pretty significant changes that ISB was recommending, so or or, uh, recommending adopting their policy. Um, this should, these policies and their adoptions or amendment should put us, uh, in pretty good shape relative to the ISB, um, policy primer recommended changes. Um, this will be the la, this should be the last swing with a lot of policies at one time, since they are directly related to the board work. I thought we might as well knock them all out uh, versus stretching them out over the course of the next couple of meetings.
Are there any questions, um, for Dr. Schuie about any of these policies?
And those would all-
I don't have any questions, but I would like to encourage all of the board members to read these policies carefully if they have not already done so.
Uh, is everybody okay with marking uh, two oh six, three will become two oh six, four? It looks like the secretary treasurer policy is reviewed?
Yes.
Okay, we'll mark that one as reviewed. The, the rest of them will come back, and and I would just echo what, what Bee just said, which is read those policies, because they're, they're important policies. Okay. Adam, anything in, uh, communications?
Oh, there's always something in communication. Um, well, I did want to say, and and I want to credit Lisa for, um, for, uh, kind of getting me onto this, doing this project. But, uh, last week I devoted a lot of time to creating a visual, um, representation of how to basically navigate our learning from home website. Um, I'm working on trying to figure out how to, how to get that in multiple languages. I'm working, uh, one of the primary purposes of that is to, uh, work with JBS to, uh, maybe reach many of the parents we know work at JBS. And, you know, whether it's because they're working, uh, you know, they're, they're working a late shift, or, you know, uh, so we know a good percentage of our folks don't have, um, regular internet access at home. So I hope the visual will maybe help. And some people are just visual learners, and they can navigate easier by seeing, you know, a guide rather than reading directions. That's just how some people prefer to learn, so. Um, and then also planning to hand, uh, those out, as I have previously with other sorts of, uh, documents, um, to a few of the businesses that remain open and and are attended, like grocery stores and things like that. Uh, just to, again, sort of make those things available, widely available, available to people, so. One major thing I'm working on, and I'm sorry, I've got a train coming through now. So the, if there's, do you have any questions for me about that, or anything else?
Thanks, Adam. Uh, reminders. Two meetings, committee meetings have been canceled. Uh, our next regular board meeting is Monday, May fourth, two thousand twenty. Uh, once again, we're assured that there will be no, uh, policies for initial review. Committee reports. Looks like the Public Arts Committee met. I don't know, I don't remember who's on that.
Bob is, Bob is on it, yes, I have, I have no- So the Public Arts Committee, uh, met, we looked at roles and responsibilities, the membership of the committee, both as it stands and future interests, um, some, uh, a little bit on, um, auditorium project-related costs and, uh, target fundraising. Um, there is a police and fire building project that will be installed by the first of June. Uh, and what else is it? That's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Um, what have we done for kids tonight? I mean, we approved the kindergarten through sixth grade social studies curriculum or materials, and the seventh through twelfth grade English language arts materials, which is a, a lot of money and and a pretty good deal.
Looked at handbooks.
We looked, we looked at all the handbooks and approved the MLA handbook. Got a good update on what everybody's doing to help our kids learn while they can't go to school.
Yeah.
We've increased our, um, amount of seat time for kids, um, with the new school starting in tons.
Yep. Bee, do you have a quote for us for tonight?
Oh, I do. I hope I can get it out while it's my computer or internet or something is still working. It comes from Helen Keller. Character cannot be developed in ease and quiet. Only through experience of trial and suffering can the soul be strengthened, vision cleared, ambition inspired, and success achieved. Did you hear it?
Yeah.
Good. Sure, it's the end of the meeting, and now everything's working.
That's right.
That's right.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Niblock McGinnis. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero.
I'm opposed.
We are, oh, six to one. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, everybody.